Good evening. Will you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, our one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, fellow board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Manager, Meredith.
Good evening.
And those in the audience. Just a reminder to the public and everyone, this meeting is being recorded. Our first order of business, we have our first citizen's comment on the, on the agenda. Seeing nobody. We do want to send along our well wishes. Madam Chairman, Deb Panetta cannot be with us this evening. She's dealing with a family illness and our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family. Given that we're a few minutes early for our 7:05 hearing, would somebody, I would entertain a motion to go out of order and we can go to the town manager's report.
So moved.
Thank you. The chair will second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
Board members, ladies and gentlemen, just a couple of quick things, couple reminders. We did get some information out regarding the, with the fires up at the Bracott and other areas and hopefully with now with the rain, I think we've got those things under control, but they ran some havoc then when we had the drought. But water, we're still looking at trying to conserve water. You know, Saugus is in a better position than I think other communities, but a lot of times it's not until the winter, after the winter and the spring that, that's able to rectify itself. I think we had, they were talking about back a few weeks ago, eighty-six percent of the communities were in severe drought. So those are things to be concerned about. Obviously, the forest fires are handling, be getting handled and so we're happy about that. I want to thank the fire chief as well as our health director that we did an informational, public service announcement video and sent that out. And I know that the board members helped put that out onto the internet and social medias to people to watch. So thank you. Also, we had, I think, a huge event that we're all thrilled about right before Thanksgiving. I've gotten many calls for many people that are using the pickleball courts and the street hockey as well as the playground and it's, you know, thirty degrees out and they're out there, lines of people. And we're still, like I said, trying to finish up a few of the things, but just a reminder to the public, we have cameras there. We'll be putting additional lighting, you know, for safety and for keeping an eye. We're also going to have a plate reader camera that is going to be installed shortly so that we'll be able to read every plate that comes in and out. And that's to help protect, you know, the taxpayers' asset and the money that we've put and invested for the town to make sure if something happens, we're able to investigate that and take a look at it. But really thrilled with it. We've gotten phone calls since that are very thankful. And I think being a multi-generational park, it's like, I think we talked about this offline, to have, you know, people of all ages, all the way up to seniors, being at the same park with kids that are, you know, ten years old or five years old is, I think, amazing that they're able to enjoy that together. So hats off to everyone involved in supporting that in the board with the finance committee and town meeting. So we're really thrilled to be able to accomplish that project. And we'll continue with our priorities to getting some of the other ones done as well. So thank you.
Hey, Mr. Manager, I know I reached out to you. I'm glad to hear that. I mean, I know we were excited to get it open before, really, this would have opened in the spring.
Correct.
But signage will be coming.
All that, yep.
I didn't think we necessarily had to put signs telling people that you don't ride bikes on a brand new.
Yeah, no, we're taking care of that.
But the sun.
They'll police themselves, I think, everything, even with the pickleball, everybody'll figure out that. And I think operationally will work out things. I've been in contact all along with both end users about different things and ideas of how to implement more operational stuff in the, in the spring to, to help make it more efficient and to prioritize, obviously, Saugus residents using it. But, I mean, the all weekend, that they were packed, the courts out there and people are waiting to use them. So we have some other stuff coming where you put paddles, I guess, to reserve your court and all that. So we got a few other minor things that are going on. But as you said, we were in a hurry to get it open. I had pickleball people calling and I had the street hockey calling every day trying to get it open. So I thought that was a good idea to get it open before the holiday and, you know, before we get any snow or whatever. But apparently, I'm hearing the pickleball folks like to play right through the winter. So we'll see how that works out. So far, so good.
Just since the chairman talking on, talking about that, I happened to drive by Sunday in a park, Sunday morning, and I drove down there and you had college kids playing street hockey. Then you had, you know, the older generation playing pickleball. It was just amazing to see the two groups coming together.
It is. It is. Yes.
Also, just a reminder, a big event we got coming on Friday evening with the annual tree lighting ceremony. That's December sixth on Friday. Starts at five, ends around eight thirty P M. With Santa arriving sometime around seven, maybe a little bit before seven. And that's when Santa welcomes everybody and we do a countdown and have some children turn on the lights and that'll be at seven. But the different events and different things that we have start about five o'clock. We're going to have some cocoa and cider. We have a trackless train, weather permitting, petting zoo that's really popular out here on the side of town hall, sleigh rides, bouncy house and many other things. So hopefully, we usually have a huge turnout. We'll see what the weather brings. But we, knock on wood, have had good luck and we really excited about having that. So just, that's just a reminder. If you need more information, you can call my office or call Youth and Rec. But anybody that needs any special assistance or anything like that, just give us a call ahead of time. We'll try to accommodate everyone. But we'll see everybody on Friday, hopefully. So thank you. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions for the manager?
No.
None?
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion so we can go back into the normal order of business. Thank you. The chair will second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. So the time has arrived for our 7:05 public hearing. Notice is hereby given. Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the request of Eduardo Panosa, 134 King Street, Groveland, Mass. Oh, one eight three four, for a common victualist license to operate Nothing Bunt Cakes, to be located at 745 Broadway, Saugus, Mass. Oh, one nine oh six. It will be held in the Saugus Town Hall Auditorium, second floor, 298 Central Street, Saugus, Mass. On December third, 2024, at seven oh five P M. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could we get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my personal address or the location.
Your personal.
Personal address. It's 134 King Street in Groveland and our zip code is zero one eight three four. My full name's Eduardo Panoso.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
So thank you for the materials that you submitted. Very helpful. As for the benefit of the public, you want to just give a, kind of a summary of what you're.
I did bring some cakes, so that has to stay here. I cannot take any home. So we're very excited. I'm very excited about Saugus. I just realized how much traffic is on Route One. I was stuck and it's really slow, which is really good for marketing. But I love this area.
There's days we might be able to get out in traffic, go in and get a cake and come back to our car in traffic.
That's true. Exactly. Yeah, it's been very, I'm very excited. Whenever the brand, whenever we did the development for Boston, Saugus was one of the spots. But I got here, I've been looking already for about a year prior to moving here. And it's been very difficult to find a location that makes sense. So this is actually going to be our first store outside of the Peabody location that's being built. And then we have Braintree location coming as well. But we're super excited about this location. I love, I love this area. My wife is actually looking at homes, just trying to find something I can afford. We moved there recently from Texas, so our prices are slightly different.
Yes, they are.
But we're very excited to be up here. I'm glad I'm wearing the jacket, actually. We have different seasons here. So, and people have been so welcoming. But the brand is phenomenal. I'm excited. I don't think there's much competition to the style of cakes that we do, to the bund cakes. Brand's been around since nineteen ninety-seven. It's a very powerful brand. There's six hundred and forty-eight stores now nationwide. Not one of them has ever shut down. So, you know, the way that we bake, the way that we do our frosting, everything is handmade, it's from scratch. We don't use anything coming out of a can. So the brand itself is phenomenal. The product speaks for itself. You know, once you get to try the cake, you'll see it. So we're very excited about that part. And, you know, we're just looking forward to being part of the community. For me, it's all about making friends, you know, and, and giving. And that's what I've done in the Peabody location. This used to be actually the worst store, one of the worst in the entire country. And this month, which is our seventh month, we finished number seven out of six hundred and forty-eight stores. So that's a huge difference from being in the worst store to the top one percent, really, of, you know, the stores now. So yeah, I'm excited. You know, we'll be doing a major development in all of Boston. And, you know, I think this city, Saugus in general being close to Revere and other towns, which we're not going to be opening in those cities, it'll be, this will be the, you know, the main one. I think it's going to attract a lot of people because they are driving from Revere, from different towns around here, from Medford, and they're going all the way up to Peabody. So a lot of people that know already that we've been looking in this area have been coming to the bakery, you know, every month. And they're like, hey, when is Saugus going to be coming alive? And we finally were able to work the numbers out with the landlord and whatnot. So we're excited.
Fantastic. Any questions from board members?
Well, it seems like all the recommendations came back positive from police, fire, and special services. And you have a floor plan, parking plan. That mall's been pretty well-established anyhow. And the cakes look delicious. Strawberries and cream, red velvet, carrot cake, Snickers doodle, all my favorite.
Yeah, there's about eight flavors here for all of you guys to try right now.
This is your, this is your second store?
This is my second. I'm opening ten in Boston. So I'm doing a ten million development.
Good for you.
Just me and my, my dad's retired already. So I used to be in the wine business for a long time. And I own restaurants right now, but all in Texas, none of them here. But I moved here for good. So my wife and I are four kids. We moved here for good. So we're not, not going anywhere. I have four years to develop these ten stores here. So that's my, that's my future now. So.
So just a few things for clarity. Hours of operation Monday through Saturday, nine to seven P M. Nine A M. to seven P M. Sundays, ten A M. to four P M. You're planning on ten to twelve employees in a full shift, but no more than six people working at the same time. There is no seating there.
That's correct. No seating.
So I just wanted to be clear on that for, for our license. Any other questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, just one comment. I gave my granddaughters the bund cupcakes for Thanksgiving. And I can tell you, they cleaned all the frosting off very quickly.
That frosting is dangerous.
They're the, they're the testers.
My two-year-old was just now like, daddy, bund cake, me? Bund cake, me? I'm like, not today. But yeah, that frosting is, it's a buttercream frosting that we make. So it's, it's very dangerous. So.
It's exciting.
Yeah, we're very excited. We'll probably have.
This will basically complete that plaza though, right? That plaza will be full, right?
Yeah.
Because now they just did the Foot Locker store at the, at the end cap, which really isn't connected, but.
And then the one next to Jersey Mike's, I think it's a spa, I believe, or nail salon.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
Yeah, we're very excited. I think we were, yeah, we were the very last ones.
They did a great job. That plaza is really nice looking. They really gave that place a beautiful facelift.
Yeah, it's very clean and.
Yeah. I think you're going to do really well.
Yeah. In the beginning, I was a little, because the brand says that we have to have an entryway from both sides of the road. So when I first moved there, even though Saugus was a development, I was kind of on the fence because I didn't know how hard it is. And driving through, I'm like, oh, my God, I don't think anybody's going to come to my store because it's only one side. And then I spoke to so many locals the past seven months and they're like, no, no, we are used to, and we will make U-turns. And it's kind of easy to get to your store through the back roads too. So that, that made it, made me feel better. So.
Fantastic.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Selectman Riley.
Through you, please, first. Good luck and I wish you well on this. It sounds great. But I got to just tell you, I love the name of that, of your cut, Nothing Bunt Cakes. I love it. And it's great. So.
Thank you. I, I want to be involved as much as I can with the city. And I'm all about donations too and fundraising. So please reach out, you know, if anyone in the city needs anything, reach out. I do a lot of donations to hospitals as well. My wife was a nurse for many, many years. Gave her too many babies now, so she's home. But I know how hard it is, you know, hospitals and the schools as well. So I'll be extremely happy to be part of the city. That's, that's what it means the most to me, really, coming to, you know, not only a new area, but we just moved to Groveland, Groveland, we're renting now. But we really are looking around this area and, you know, I really want to be part of the city. So anything that I can do to help, if you guys have any ideas, please feel free to, to reach out to me. So.
You just made a lot of people happy listening, hearing you say that. You'll be getting a lot of calls and emails, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'll be looking forward to it. So.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick question. When do you have expected our opening date?
I think as fast as we, we have our general contractors ready. And I believe I have to get this license and then I have another certificate to get hopefully tomorrow, get this other cert, the, I believe it's the Commonwealth certificate. I just got to give a check tomorrow to the clerk's office downstairs and then as soon as we can get the apartments. So it would all depend. As soon as we get the apartments, and it'll take about sixty days to build. Our contractors are pretty quick guys. And, you know, they gave us a good bid on both locations. So they're kind of already used to, architect plans are already all drawn up and ready to go. So we're ready to build. So hopefully, I would say February to be, February, most likely maybe end of February. We already have all equipment paid. We have everything ready to go. So.
Fantastic.
Yeah, we're ready to go. So I'm hoping February, we'll have the doors open. So.
Great.
Yeah, it'll be quick.
That's all I have.
Excellent. Any other questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
The chair will second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Sereno's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Selectman Sereno.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant a common victualist license to Nothing Bunt Cakes located at 745 Broadway. Hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, nine A M. to seven P M. Sunday, ten A M. to four P M.
Okay. The chair will second that motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Sereno's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Welcome to Saugus.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I appreciate it.
Fantastic.
Do I sign here?
Yes, if you could, that would be fantastic. The next, the next order of business on our agenda will be our license renewals. We have several classes of licenses that are up for renewal and each of my fellow selectmen will take turn going through the various types of licenses. I think we're going to start with Selectman Sereno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve for the 2025 all-alcoholic common victualist license with the same conditions as their current 2024 license. One Ten Grill, eight eighty-five Broadway Entertainment. Applebee's.
Applebee's, 214 Broadway Entertainment. Border Cafe, 356 Broadway Entertainment. Buffalo Wild Wings, 180 Broadway Entertainment. Casa Volatara, 114 Broadway Entertainment. Continental, 266 Broadway Entertainment. Flow Golf, 880 Broadway Entertainment. Hammer Smith, 330 Central Street Entertainment. Hooters, 114 Broadway Entertainment. Jimmy's Steakhouse, 114 Broadway Entertainment. K Pub, 22 Lincoln Ave Entertainment. Caloon, 948 Broadway Entertainment. Oi's, 44 Broadway Entertainment. Polk Harry's, 92 Broadway Entertainment. Prince, 517 Broadway Entertainment. Pushcot, 331 Main Street Entertainment. Rosaria's, 190 Main Street Entertainment. Route 1 Grill, 817 Broadway Entertainment. Soy, Soyu, 124 Broadway Entertainment. Tokyo Steakhouse, 11201 Broadway Entertainment. 99 Restaurant, 181 Broadway. Fudd Ruckers, 910 Broadway. La Vida Mia, 36 Hamilton Street. Longhorn, 1325 Broadway. Maddie's, 1639 Broadway. Sully Sees, 168 Broadway. 2025 Beer and Wine and Cordial Carmen Victuris license with the same conditions as their current 2024 license. Iron Town Diner, 325 Main Street Entertainment. King Crab, 180 Main Street Entertainment. K Town Barbecue, 910 Broadway Entertainment. Long Noodle, 1894 Broadway, Suite 10 Entertainment. Paolo's, 340 Broadway. Angela's, 209 Broadway. Out of Asia, 1268 Broadway. 2025 All Alcoholic Carmen Victuris, Victuris Club licenses with the same conditions as their current 2024 license. American Legion, 44 Taylor Street Entertainment. Elks, 401 Main Street Entertainment. Fox Hill, 114 Ballard Street Entertainment. ITM, 1 Beachview Ave Entertainment. Knights of Columbus, 57 Appleton Street Entertainment. Melrose Fish and Grain Game, Reachiever Ave Entertainment. VFW, 190 Main Street Entertainment. 2025 All Alcoholic Package Store licenses with the same conditions as their current 2024 license. Amato's, 339 Broadway. Bossy's, 216 Broadway Entertainment. Cliftondale, 7 Essex Street. Guy's, 7 Main Street. Nasty Narnies, 325 Main Street. North Shore Liquors, 180 Main Street. 2025 Beer and Wine Package Store licenses with the same conditions as their current 2024 license. Joe's Beer and Wine, 304 Lincoln Ave. Cristo's, 465 Essex Street. Lees's, 4A Howard Street. Pachi, 190 Main Street.
I think that's my list, yeah?
Yep. Miss, he's going to-
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have it there? Oh, okay.
Okay, so, I want to make the motion that we approve all these alcoholic licenses with the approved for renewal contingent upon submission of all the required applications and documentations, including all fees paid and all past due taxes being settled and paid by December 31, 2024, with the exception of the licenses that have defects that have been subject to cancellation, non-renewal, and/or revocation pursuant to a show cause hearing outlined in prior notices that were previously sent out and pursuant to all relevant statutes and regulations.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Selectman Cogliano.
Two of those licenses, Paolo's, 310 Lincoln Ave, and, which is the wrong address, so file is 310 Lincoln Ave, and Joe's Beer and Wine, which is also, I'm sorry, 304 Lincoln Ave, and 304 Lincoln Ave. I'm abstaining from those, as I am one of the landlords.
Mr. Chairman, Meredith, I'm also going to abstain voting on the Italian-American club. I was a co-founder of the club and a member.
That's it.
Okay, the chair?
Yeah, he said it.
Yes, I did when I made the motion.
Yes. Yep. So, the chair has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of these, of these license renewals with the restrictions and conditions identified by Selectman Serino and with the extensions noted by both Selectman Cogliano and Selectman Serino, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have our auto dealer licenses, et cetera, and I believe Selectman Riley's going to take those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve the 2025 Class 1 Auto Dealer licenses with all restrictions and conditions as current 2024 license. McGovern Ford, 1481 Broadway. Motion to approve the 2025 Class 2 Auto Dealer licenses with all restrictions and conditions as current 2024 license. 24 Winter Street LLC, 24 Winter Street. ASAM LLC, 19 Salem Turnpike. Auto Excellence, 173 Main Street. Auto House USA, 11345 Broadway. Ballard Street Auto, 119 Ballard Street. CMP Imports, 110 Bennett Highway. Casella Auto, 56 Denver Street. Chapman Auto Body, 16 Rear, Hamilton Street. Colonial Auto Sales, 1753 Broadway. HZ Motors, 214 through 218 Hamilton Street. Melrose Auto Body, 177 Broadway. Nicoli Auto Body, 819 Broadway. Ken's Car Care Center, 128 Ballard Street. King Motor Car, 160 Broadway. Polo Gas, 50 Hamilton Street. Owens Motors, 109 Broadway. Sogas Auto Mall, 136 Broadway. Sogas Auto Repair, 74 Hamilton Street. Sogas Auto Sales, 233 Hamilton Street. TJ's Auto, 124 Ballard Street, and U-Haul, 66 Broadway. Motion to approve the 2025 Class 3 Auto Dealer licenses with all restrictions and conditions as current 2024 license. ASAM LLC, 19 Salem Turnpike. Nicoli Auto Body, 819 Broadway. Motion to approve the 2025 Limbo licenses with all restrictions and conditions as current 2024 license. Naughty Limousine, 319 Lincoln Avenue. Our licenses are approved for renewal are contingent on submission of all required applications and documentation, including all fees being paid and all past due taxes being settled and paid by December 31, 2024, with the exception of licenses that have defects or have been subject to cancellation, non-renewal, and/or revocation pursuant to a show cause hearing outlined in prior notices that were previously sent out and pursuant to all relevant statutes and regulations.
The chair will second that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you, Selectman Riley. Our next set of licenses will be handled by Selectman Cogliano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to approve the 2025 Carmen Victuris licenses with the same conditions set forth in 2024. 7-Eleven, 32 Hamilton Street. 7-Eleven, 386 Lincoln Ave. Athiti, 1268 Broadway Entertainment. Angelo's Roast Beef, 343 Main Street Entertainment. Bachi's, 4A Howard Street. Banana Splits, 522 Lincoln Ave Entertainment. Bara Greta Italiano, 184 Broadway Entertainment. Burger King, 1449 Broadway. Bubble Tea, 1202 Broadway, Unit 117. CVS, 1075 Broadway, extended hours. Chipotle, 444 Broadway. Crumble Cookie, 358 Broadway. Dave's Hot Chicken, 890 Broadway. Dragon Island, 44 Hamilton Street. Dumpling Garden, 467 Essex Street, Unit E. Duncan, 35 Lincoln Ave. Duncan, 42 Hamilton Street Entertainment. Duncan, 86 Broadway Entertainment. Duncan, 339 Main Street Entertainment. Duncan, 1204 Broadway. Duncan, 508 Lincoln Ave. Duncan, 533 Broadway, extended hours. Duncan, 1539 Broadway, extended hours. Familia, 1268 Broadway. Five Guys, 670 Broadway. Giovanni's, 194 Broadway. JLS Associates, 935 Broadway Skating Rink. Goodfellas, 240 Lincoln Ave. Hometown Pizza, 23 Essex Street. Hong Kong Express, 461 Lincoln Ave. Honey Baked Ham, 405 Broadway. IHOP, 114 Broadway, extended hours. J&amp;M, 304 Central Street Entertainment. Jersey Mike's, 714 Broadway. Kane's, 12, 120 Lincoln Ave. Kane's, 1575 Broadway. Kelly's, 595 Broadway. Kentucky Fried Chicken, 421 Broadway. Marao Burgers, 1-3 Main Street. McDonald's, 127 Broadway. McDonald's, 378 Broadway. Mike's Place, 237 Hamilton Street. Nick's Place, 306 Central Street Entertainment. Nikki's Pizza Time, 361 Lincoln Ave. Orange Leaf, 124 Broadway Entertainment. Original Giovanni's, 194 Broadway Entertainment. Papagino's, 385 Broadway. Panera Bread, 647 Broadway. Peters Pizza, 48 Hamilton Street. Rich Dale, 304 Lincoln Ave Entertainment. Roller World, 425 Rear Broadway Entertainment. Sons of Sicily, 305 Lincoln Ave. Speedway, 2400 Broadway, extended hours. Speedway, 1535 Broadway, extended hours. Stella's Pizzeria, 265 Essex Street Entertainment. Starbucks, 855 Broadway. Starbucks, 366B Broadway. Sox, 67 Lindfels Parkway. Vendor Seasonal, Square One Mall, 1201 Broadway Entertainment. Target, 400 Lindfels Parkway. Trader Joe's, 358 Broadway. Tropical Smoothies, 352 Broadway. Victor's, 560 Lincoln Ave. Walgreens, 1228 Broadway Entertainment. Wendy's, 777 Broadway. Wingstop, 352 Broadway. Yaya's Juice and Smoothies, 306 Central Street.
And all licenses are approved for renewal and, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make a summary. I mean, I forgot Burger King and stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Yeah. It's 720 Broadway Burger King should be the other one.
Okay, we'll add that to it. Thank you.
All licenses are approved for renewal are contingent on submission of all required application and documentation, including all fees being paid and all past due taxes being settled and paid by December 31, 2024, with the exception of licenses that have defects or have been subject to cancellation, non-renewal, and/or revocation pursuant to a show cause hearing outlined in prior notices that were previously sent out and pursuant to all relevant statutes and regulations, with the same conditions.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. The chair will second. Is there any discussion?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I will abstain from Rich Dale at 304 Lincoln Ave.
Okay, any, any others? I'm going to do those next. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion with the one abstention noted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Selectman Cogliano.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 Valuable Used Good licenses with the same conditions that they held in 2024. ASA Jewelers, 451 Lincoln Ave. GCA Jewelers, 406 Lincoln Ave. J&amp;S Jewelers, 1277 Broadway. K Jewelers, 1201 Broadway. And Sassoon Jewelers, which is on Central Street. Not sure of the number.
Yeah, it is Central Street.
And I make a motion to approve the 2025 Miscellaneous Goods licenses with the same conditions that they hold in 2024. Tina J's, 624 Broadway Fortune Teller, and Ellie Fitness, 1450 Broadway Entertainment.
Okay, one, one question before you make the motion. There's the jewelry store in Cliftondale. I didn't see that on here, but I know that it's right next to the old Suites School.
Oh, that's right.
To the right of-
I think that's ASA.
That's J&amp;S.
It's not, is that J&amp;S? At 1277 Broadway?
That's Greg Julie. He's next to the-
No, GCA is Greg. That's the one in Cliftondale. This is as you're coming out of Cliftondale, right before the Suites School on the right side, it's an old house, a blue-
I think, I thought that was J&amp;S.
What?
That's J&amp;S.
Well, it says 1277 Broadway. That's, that can't be.
Yeah, let me look up, let me do a Google search.
It's J&amp;S, I believe.
It's J&amp;S, right?
I think so.
Then the address must not be correct. I just want to make sure we have it right, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this says J&amp;S 406, 406 Lincoln Ave.
It says JCO.
I think that the addresses might be imposed there.
J, J&amp;S, J&amp;S Jeweleries. Oh, it looks like we missed one. I think, I think ASA, GCA, J&amp;S, K Jewelers, those must all have to move down, I think, or up. That's why Sassoon's missing.
That's why I'm missing, yes.
Right?
Well-
No, it's, I-
No, Sassoon Jewelers isn't, isn't on, it's on Central Street.
GCA Jewelers is 451 Lincoln Ave.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I think these-
Where's ASA? Does anybody know?
I know you're in the square two.
So, maybe that's the one that's mixed up. Let me do a Google search on that one.
Square One Mall. That's at the square one.
Yeah.
I don't know ASA.
Hmm.
So, that's 1277. So, they all should be moved, they all should be moved down. I would just add ASA Jewelers at 1277 Broadway, Square One Mall.
1277 Broadway.
And that's where Sassoon is as well? Scott?
No, Sassoon's at Central Street.
Sassoon's at Central Street.
Oh, wait a minute. 1277 Broadway is probably, there's another one at the mall, so that, that's okay.
Yeah, I think K Jewelers is 1277, which is the mall.
Yep.
J&amp;S is the 406 Lincoln Ave.
Correct.
GCA is the 451.
Yep. And then you just need to, and Sassoon is 12, 1201.
So, to modify, to modify the motion, we would say ASA Jewelers, 1277 Broadway.
Square One Mall.
Square One Mall. GCA Jewelers, 451 Lincoln Ave. J&amp;S Jewelers, 406 Lincoln Ave. K Jewelers, 1277 Broadway, Square One Mall. And Sassoon Jewelers on Central Street.
348 Central Street.
348 Central Street. I'll make that in the form of a modification to the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for reading. It was fabulous.
Did you guys do the miscellaneous?
Oh, I thought he read... He read the...
I read the last ones.
He did the miscellaneous right after. It was all part of the same...
Okay, great.
...motion. Yeah. He read those last two, Ellie Fitness. Next item on the agenda is the Citizens Comment. Is there anyone here who would like to...
Hi, how you doing? Welcome.
Good evening. Can we have your name and address for the...
Abner Gonzalez, 44 Broadway, Saugus. The reason we're here is we're trying to get more information. I've been a few times to Meredith's office on the clerks and Meredith and the City Manager's office. We submitted the documents you guys requested last time, a month ago, and we haven't heard... We're trying to get answers just to see if we have to modify anything. We were able to work with Kevin, and we came up with a deal about the liquor license because there wasn't a purchase and sell, I don't know if you remember. So we did a document where we did a purchase and sell with Kevin Gee, the owner of Old Oh Yes, and we submitted the documents, so we're just trying to see what we have with that. We really want to get in the next hearing, so I don't know if the manager can help us with that or...
Yeah. So first of all, just to let you know, in Citizens Comments, we're not supposed to have dialogue back and forth. It's supposed to be you speaking and us, but we bend the rules from time to time if we have to.
Oh, sorry.
I did hear through a couple of different avenues, a little bit concerning. I just want to make sure this isn't going to be a nightclub, because we've heard mixed reviews that the feeling is that there's an appetite for this to become a nightclub-type venue. And that's not what you applied for.
No, right now we have... So we applied for the bar. We have a bar on the second floor.
Yep.
And the restaurant, obviously.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think I can make some comments.
Please, Mr. Man.
They submitted some paperwork, I think three-plus weeks ago, to the board. I think it worked out some information. I did forward that on through the Chairman Panetta to our, you know, liquor license attorney. He has gotten back to us, I think, right before Thanksgiving, a day or two. I forwarded that on to Selectman Panetta, the Chairwoman. She's been tied up, I think, a little bit with some personal issues, but I think that the bigger concern, the board can do what they want. My suggestion, as you know, I've had some experience with sitting on the board, is it sounds like, like you used to ask, I think the questions in general, right? I think that some of the stuff that your attorney and the owners put together, I think, would, I think, would work for the board's consideration. I think the only concern I think he's raising is that it almost seems like you're submitting applications for approval in piecemeal. So in other words, I think that the board and the abutters really in the town are at a distinct disadvantage, not knowing what the entire vision is for the establishment. So in other words, you know, in the sense of what, you know, what you're looking to do, because it sounds like, I think Meredith said something about you might be submitting another application for a dance club, and that then the abutters would have to be re-notified. And I think that, you know, the board can do, but my suggestion would be figure out what the entire vision is, what licenses you're actually looking to apply for in your entire operation, and what type of entertainment licenses you're looking for, whether that's dancing, you're looking to have some sort of after-hours or late bar or whatever. But I think that that would be fair to have the board and the abutters to be noticed on all of it, so that everything's being considered rather than in piecemeal. So I think we're almost there, but I think Meredith did mention that you were looking to put in something to do with another entertainment license to add. Dancing would then would require the abutters and the board and everybody to get re-noticed. So I think that, you know, maybe what you could do is, even now, you know, they can't go back and forth yet. I can a little bit, but what is the vision? And I think that's what, you know, Selectman Chairman Chicalini was referring to, is that they just don't know what the entire picture is, and I think it does put the town, the board, and the abutters and the residents at a distinct disadvantage, not knowing if we're doing it in piecemeal, what it is, the whole vision is for the club, for the restaurant, for entertainment, and for what licenses you're looking for. And I think if we have a better idea, I think, and that's just my suggestion to the board, I think you have a better, you know, whether you vote yes, no, or you have concerns, that's what you'll be being able to deliberate over. So maybe if that's what you're looking to do, is to add something else, then the abutters would have to get re-noticed and I think present everything all at one time for the board to consider. That's my suggestion to the board.
Mr. Chairman, just to the manager, is that attorney Zalesnik, Scott, that you spoke to?
So another thing I would like to just point out, when you communicate through our office, through our clerk, I would appreciate if you do so with respect and professionalism, not raise your voice, whoever's speaking on your behalf. That's not going to win points with the board or Selectmen. Our clerk is a function, she works with us, for us. She doesn't deserve to be spoken to in a derogatory manner or in any type of frustration or hostility. If you have an issue with the board, you talk to the board when you come before us, but I expect that you give her the professionalism and the respect that she deserves.
I guess I have. I don't think I... It's just a little frustrating sometimes, you know, we have a huge rent to pay. We're just... It gets, you know, when I go in five, six times to find out a little information on it, you know, and...
But she's a clerk. I mean, she's not... It's not her fault, no matter if there's a delay or not a delay. She's a clerk, and she's not responsible for making the decisions. She's only doing what we're asking her to do. So I would just appreciate it if you'd just show a little courtesy and professionalism to our clerk.
Okay. And I just add to that, Mr. Chairman, is I'm sure you guys are frustrated. You're trying to do something, and it doesn't sound like you know exactly what you're trying to do, or maybe you do, but what happens in general, like procedurally, is that you would... People submit applications and paperwork. They don't just go right on an agenda. There's an administrative review period so that we can look to make sure that that information meets all the requirements, and it sounds like part of it is that you have a vision that may include other things that weren't in the initial application, and there were some flaws with the initial application, not having an actual agreement that transferred the liquor license. So we're trying to work on fixing that. So we're frustrated, too, because it's we're trying to figure out what's wrong with, you know, some of the defects in your application, and we're using, you know, obviously an outside counsel that specializes in liquor and trying to, you know, wait for him to get back to us while we review it for the board. And I think that I've been trying to facilitate that for the board, but I think that's been, I think, on both ends. We're pro-business. We try to do what we can to facilitate people trying to open and apply, but there's also that part where you guys don't seem like you 100% know your attorney. It seemed like he made a few mistakes at the last hearing, and, you know, that sort of, I think, has set everybody back. But I think, again, I would suggest, so that everybody's on the same page, to put together what... Everything that you're looking to apply for, for licenses and entertainment that you're going to have there, and have that completed and submitted, so that then the abutters would be noticed on everything, and the board would be, you know, would be noticed on that, so that everybody can be on the same page, exactly what the vision is for your restaurant and what type of entertainment. I think that benefits everybody, so that they're not at a distinct disadvantage. You come in and ask for one thing, and then you come in a month later, ask for something else. And I think it's just sort of the wires have been crossed here. I think there's been, you know, we're doing anything. Like I think I offered before, I'm happy to facilitate. No one's, you know, contacted me directly. You've submitted stuff, and then when I got it to me, I sent it out to the attorney, and then we waited, and it, you know, come in right before the holiday.
Okay.
So we try to do what we can, but I think part of it is, I think, that's what Selectman Chicalini and I think everybody's, we're just... No one knows what the entire vision of what your restaurant is. We want to support it. I think they want to support it. I don't want to speak for them, but we just don't know what it entails, and that the more things you add, different entertainment, creates other concerns from the abutters, for sure.
And I'm sorry. I'm just going to be like honest to you, especially, you know...
And I don't want to cut you off, but then it goes into another thing where the board can put certain hours of what closure is, if there's going to be other things going on there. There's a whole bunch of different things that come into play if there's other things that are happening there for entertainment. I think that's what the board is alluding to.
And you know what, like I told Meredith once, is when we first came into Saugus, they recommended this lawyer, and we went to him, and as soon as we sit in on his office, he's like, "You're not getting this, you're not getting that, you're not getting that, you're not getting..." So he's like, "Just apply for this, that, this." So that's what kind of scared us all away, you know, like...
Yeah.
He's a lawyer here in Saugus, and he's like, "You're not getting nothing from the board." So he put that, like, that afraidness in us, you know?
Who told you that?
Yeah, I forget his lawyer. The Kevin recommended to us, and as soon as he said all those things, you know, I'm already, I already have a lease, this big lease that I already signed, and that was the main reason why we weren't stuck in...
The leases use... The signing of the lease is usually contingent upon approval from the board.
Yes.
So if you didn't get approved, you wouldn't be bound to the lease.
Yeah, and that was our lease as well, but we already had started doing decorations in the building and all these things, you know, so like, that was the main reason. We kind of... We were so scared when we first came in front of the board, you know, but...
Do you have a date for them to come back yet?
We don't have the... I think they haven't submitted, I think, the other application that they're looking for.
Is there another application coming?
Yeah, we're applying for the dance, pretty much right now for just the dance, but like as he said, we're going to apply for whatever.
Let me just stop you there for a second. We have several places in Saugus, Calum Grill House, every single club has dancing. Is there a license for dancing that these places have that I've never seen?
I think, no, I think it's the entertainment. I think you have to, like, how many TVs, if you're going to have dancing, what kind of band?
But I think we already approved...
What kind of music you're going to have?
They approve... You guys approve us for everything except dancing, because...
Right, no, no, wait. I'm not saying we approved dancing. I'm saying we already approved the TVs and the band and all that stuff. We didn't specify dancing, but I think to Selectman Cogliano's point, I don't think we specify dancing as a separate part of a license. Do we?
It's entertainment.
Okay. And that was not specified in our last go-around?
Yeah.
Because I remember you asked the question, and then the comment came up about whatever.
It wasn't listed as an entertainment on your first license you submitted.
Okay, so when you submitted your first application, you did not specify dancing?
No.
So now you're coming back to add dancing to this?
Yes.
So to the manager's point, I think it would make sense for us to have the total package under an application, so that we know exactly what we're approving, because when you're advertising and the abutters are getting notified, they're coming thinking that that's it. Whatever gets approved, gets approved. You're not supposed to come, get approved for some things, and then come back and get approved for other things. We'd like to have a package and know what we're approving in that venue. There is no desire, though, to have it become like a nightclub, correct?
In the future, we would love to. In the future, we would love to have... We have the space, but I don't know if there's an issue with that or...
Well, that's what it was. That's what always was upstairs, was a dance club. It was a restaurant that had entertainment, and they danced, you know?
Mr. Chairman, just a question. We approved an entertainment license for karaoke and stuff like that, and a Carmen Victor's license. Are you open yet serving food?
Not yet.
No.
No? So you're waiting on the liquor?
Well, we're going to probably open with our liquor license, just because we had to pay the rent, and we're already doing the final inspections. We're having the fire department going next Wednesday and the rest of the departments, but we'll probably open with our liquor license.
So you can open without the liquor license?
Yes.
Right now? Okay.
Just from someone who's been in the business a long time, that's not a good move. I know you want to get open. Do it the right way. Get the license and open at the same time. Just an opinion.
Yeah, and as far as you go through, Mr. Chairman, but whatever you're looking to do, I think it's better just to come with what you're trying to do. Like, it seems like now that's what you're looking to do, to have dancing and all that, and talking about having a nightclub, because the board then would consider different things. They might say that these are the hours or whatnot, because there's a neighborhood. There'd be other conditions that they may put on it, but if they don't know about that, then I think it's harder to come in later. You might not be able to, you know, include what type of music you're going to have. You're going to have DJs, or you're going to have how many, you know, peace band or whatnot. I think that's what they have to, you know, I think, consider, if that makes sense.
So you really should come in with a new entertainment license that you want dancing, plus straighten out the liquor issues, come in with a new application for a liquor license.
Yeah, because I think the abutters would have to be noticed.
That's right.
The abutters are going to have to be noticed of what the entertainment they're applying for. Conditioned, for sure.
It's going to go through the whole process, notify the abutters and everything.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a question. I didn't follow this, because I got in the middle of it. Has the board approved the hours of operation already?
I believe so, yes.
Carmen Victor's license.
On the convict, we did. Yes.
Right, so you could potentially look at a liquor license and put different hours.
Yes.
Because that's... I would think the entertainment would drive the hours that you'd support.
Yep.
The type of entertainment would drive that, so... Anybody else want to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to members' comments. We'll start with Selectman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder that this Thursday is the Second Annual Kids Coat Drive. It's going to be held at the Saugus Elks. It starts at 7:00 PM, and if you can, drop off a new coat for ages 5 to 18. I want to thank the Saugus Fire and Police Departments for organizing this event. Reets Across America is a week from Saturday, December 14, at Riverside Cemetery at noon, honoring our deceased veterans. I hope to see everyone at the tree lighting on Friday evening, and my thoughts and prayers to Deb and your family, the Panettas, during this very difficult time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cogliano.
I was going to bring up the coat drive on Thursday night, but Selectman Riley did it. I just hope to see everybody on Friday for the tree lighting, and again, thank you for a nice job with the opening of the playground last week. It was very good.
Excellent. Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. Selectman Serena.
Just to touch upon Corinne, I think, hit everything.
Did I?
With the coat drive and the tree light on Friday night. Hope to see everybody there, and we'll be meeting on the 17th again, so we'll be talking to the public back again on the 17th. So that's it.
Great. Thank you, Selectman Serena. I just want to echo the comments made to Chairman Panetta and her family. We're obviously thinking of you, and obviously our hearts, thoughts, and prayers go out to you and your family during this difficult time, especially around the holidays. So lots of love coming your way.
Just to mention, yeah, Deb. I spoke to Deb last night. I forgot to mention Deb. I know she's going through a tough time. This is a part of life that we all going to have to face sooner or later, but...
I already have.
Yeah. So have I, and Anthony, and Corinne, you know, Scott at an early age, so I wish the Panetta family all the best.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else to come before the board? Seeing none?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Great.
Selectman Cogliano makes the motion. She has seconds for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good night, everybody.
Good evening, everybody.
Good night.